City Council, come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cadine. Dionne.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
La Liberty. Pelletier.
Here.
Carrera.
Here.
Reposo.
Here.
Washington.
Here.
President Camara.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Entertainer motion to open-
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to open made by Counsel Reposo, seconded by Counsel Washington. We have one proposal before us, Underground Conduit for Verizon New England Incorporated for an underground conduit location as follows, on the Vauld Street. Install approximately 680 feet of new four-inch PVC conduit along the Vauld Street. The installation will begin at existing manhole MH 499A at the junction of Turner Street and the Vauld Street to run in a southerly direction to 431 the Vauld Street. This is necessary to continue the existing service and to provide services to the businesses located at 431 the Vauld Street in accordance with Plan Number MA 2022-36 dated September 30th, 2022. There is a condition that the roadway restoration shall be from the southerly curb line to two feet beyond the trench. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Come on down, please. State your name and address for the record. Take a seat, please. Speak into the microphone.
Good evening. Don Bonner with Verizon. I assume everybody has a copy of their map. This is usually where I get into what it typically looks like and what's going to be happening, but I can tell you that this happens from time to time. But I just visited the site and the work has already been done. So, or at least it appears to be. And I approached the businessman at the gas station at 431 the Vauld and he said it was done just a couple of months ago. This is not, this is news to me. So, this, we usually come here, ask for permission, and then the work gets done. So, I don't know how this happened or why it happened. I intend to find out because obviously I'm the one who's in trouble here, so I want to find out what happened. Sometimes a subcontractor will get the work and they'll just say, "Oh," and they'll go do it. But to my knowledge, they weren't given permission to do so.
Counselor Seat Six, Counsel Prow.
Well, first, I'd like to applaud you for your honesty, coming here and telling us that this work had been done, because I was going to ask you that, because I had been by there and saw. But did they also meet the conditions of the restoration of the road?
I have pictures and it looks like it's within the two feet of the curb. So, it looks, it looks very good. I don't want to complain about the work, because that looks fine, and the business owner says he's very happy, he's getting service now. But the condition does appear to have been met. I'm not an engineer. I can't speak to that fully, but I do have pictures if you'd like to see them.
Well, I'm glad that you were able to say the work was done prior to us coming for permission, but then I would say, on behalf of the city, how did we allow work to be done without permission? So, I would request that we send a letter to the city engineer, make him aware of this, because maybe there's something that needs to be tweaked on your end or our end, and by us knowing this now, we can do something to prevent something like this from happening in the future. But thank you. With that, I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Seat Eight, Counsel Washington.
I yield. She actually-
Right. Does anyone else have any questions? Counselor Seat Two, Counsel Dionne.
Yeah, my only question is, was going to be, has the city engineer been made aware of it or looked at it already? Well, we don't know anything other than the work's been done, unfortunately. He's not here with us tonight, so I, Counselor in Seat Six's suggestion is the best that we have right now, but we definitely need answers, there's no doubt. I mean, this kind of thing can't just randomly happen. It's amazing. Nobody noticed this being done? Was, what, how many feet long?
Almost seven hundred.
Yeah, so almost seven hundred feet of a road being torn up and nobody noticed? All right? With that, I yaled.
It was four inches PVC replacement. I agree with Counsel. Counselor Seat Five, want to add to this?
Yeah, what, this is a type of business? What kind of business is it?
This is Verizon.
Verizon? I'm surprised.
I'm not sure who the subcontractor was that did it, but it's under Verizon's umbrella responsible in the end.
And the purpose is for Verizon to make it better for the people of Far River? Is that why it's there? I mean-
Yeah, I, driving down the Vauld from Turner, I noticed there's a bunch of buildings that have come down recently, and I think it's going to be the service that will block. And that may be why nobody noticed it, is because there's construction going on there as is right now. I can't, I'm guessing.
So, that mill next to the gas station that was knocked down, is that part of it too?
No.
No? I'm just trying to visualize, you know, the place and whereabouts it is. I must have missed it too. But usually when the work is being done, more than likely you have an application, and the only way we find out is if somebody complains about it. And you put this thing in, the request?
I was the one who submitted the request for Verizon, so-
Yeah.
I intended to come here and ask for your permission. So, the fact that I'm not able to do that angers me as well, so.
So, you're saying Verizon went ahead and done it without permission?
Yeah, one of their subcontractors, yeah.
Oh, the subcontractors. Well, you know, we had people putting curbstone back in because they took it out, or we fined them monies because they went ahead and done something they weren't supposed to do. And, you know, we try to work along with them, pay the fine, and you'll be all set. But to put this much layout, pipe, and nobody knows about it, and they jumped the gun, you know, that construction company, I mean, we should know who the company is. I'm not going to ask you, but I'd like to know, you know, later on tonight, or tomorrow, when they call the City Hall, what company did start that? And then I'll take it from there. You know, if there's one that slips like they do, is there anybody else doing the same thing? You know, I know guys who pull out oil tanks and never pull a permit, and they get caught, but, and they paid a good, healthy fine. This is not right. Verizon is the one that gave the job out, and the contractors, they should have made sure that Verizon, made sure that the contractor wasn't going to start until he's supposed to start. So, so that's the way I feel, and I got to find out who it is. And we got to be more careful, that's it. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. I think the problem was that they didn't get permission from the council, but the clerk's going to shed some light. They did go through the proper channels, I believe, so clerk's going to shed some light on the permits that were pulled and the permission that was granted, not by the council, but by the city engineer, I believe.
Right, so, once we received this petition on October 26th, the request was sent to the city engineer for the approval of this petition, and he did approve it with the condition that's listed on your agenda tonight. So, he is aware of this particular petition. I can't speak to the work done prior to us receiving the petition, but this one, he is definitely approved and is aware of.
Does it say who the contractor was?
It does not.
Okay. So, we'll find out more tomorrow. Debbie, no further questions. Thank you for coming down. Thank you for your honesty, and let's try to prevent it from happening again.
Thank you.
The topic passes tonight.
Motion to close the hearing.
Not yet. Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Seeing none, I'll now entertain a-
Motion to close the public hearings.
Motion to close the public hearing has been made by Counsel Prow, seconded by Counsel Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Public hearing is ended. Now, it's time for the City Council Committee on Finance. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cadine. Dionne.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
La Liberty. Pelletier.
Here.
Carrera.
Here.
Reposo.
Yep.
Washington.
Here.
President Camara.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. I do want to state that Counsel Cadine had spoken to me earlier, and he cannot be at tonight's meeting. I mean, it's a prior commitment, and Counsel Liberty Low is on her way. She's just running a little behind. We have citizens input time. Anyone sign up? No one signed up tonight. Election must be over. Item number two is discussion in regards to Section 108 loan application with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for the replacement of fire apparatus and equipment. It was referred on the council November 8th, 2022. Please come down, although we know who you are, just state your name and address for the record, appreciated, and title.
Michael Dionne, Director of Community Development for the City of Fall River, 205 Chase Street, Somerset, Mass.
Good evening, Counselors. Fire Chief Roger St. Martin. I live at One Storybook Court, Westport, Mass.
Good evening.
We're going to waive the rules. Not for the chief.
Excuse me?
He comes from Westport.
It's fine, that's not-
Come from Fall River. I still have a house in Fall River.
Oh.
Thank you. 24 and Manton Street, Fall River, Massachusetts.
We're in finance committee. Anyone can come down from our town. And gentlemen, feel free to state your business address instead of your home address next time. It's quite all right. You're representing the city. You can state One Government Center and whatever the address is in Fire Headquarters. But Counsel, we don't need to waive the rules. There, it's a finance committee.
Okay.
We don't, a lot of people from outside the city speak during finance. It's in a regular meeting that we need to waive the rules.
Okay, you're right.
Do you guys want to give us a brief scenario of what we're doing here and how we can help?
Sure. In front of you tonight, you have a Section 108 loan application in the amount of $2.5 million for your approval, and that money is to use to upgrade fire apparatus. This application process is not new. If you recall, several years ago, FR CDA was successful in obtaining a little less than $5 million for the replacement of aging fire equipment. The city replaced seven fire vehicles ranging from fire pumpers to an aerial platform truck. This application is for $2.5 million. The funding will be used to replace ladder truck four and engine nine. CDA followed its citizens' participation plan. We had public hearings held on August 17th and September 7th. The 30-day public comment period commenced on August 26th and finished on September 27th. The chief and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Counselor Seat Two, Counsel Dionne.
Good evening. Believe me, let me start off with, I am not against apparatus, getting new, replacing, fixing, none of them. I'm all for it. My question is, on a 108 loan application, with those funds, it's specifically for low to moderate income areas?
Yes, it's to, it's to provide services to the low-income population of the city.
Okay, so, I'm just going to read one sentence in this letter. This equipment will serve all city residents, the majority of which are low to moderate income. And this may sound like a stupid question, but if it's meant for low to moderate and it's supposed to be in the areas that comply with that, and as much as you can't pick and choose which houses you don't stop from burning down, how can it be utilized everywhere?
The city is 61% LMI overall. Anything that's over 50% can be done citywide. So, that fire truck and the pumper, the ladder truck can go anywhere in the city and be placed in any fire station in the city.
Okay, very good.
So, we don't pick and choose which houses we go to based on if the person's low-income or not.
Exactly.
I think we'd have a problem with that.
I just, I just know that with the 108 loan, that that would be the questions out there, that would be some, you know, beating the drum and clarification sometimes.
I might add the fact that they will be housed at the Flint Fire Station, which has a low-income area as well. And I think as the Burns Power Tool Fire recently illustrated that every piece of apparatus was there and all, well, two reserve apparatus were there as well. So, again, any fire that we have in the city, we send three engines, two ladders and heavy rescue, which is more than half the city, more than half the resources we have in the city. That's required by NFPA standards. So, they will be used throughout the city.
I mean, as sad as it is that that's our income level, over, what, 60% you said?
61. It's actually lower now. It was 60 point, 63.3 in the last census of 2010. It's a little bit less than 61%. But if you look on page four, you can see exactly what the low-income percentages are for each one of our fire stations. They range from 93% in the central fire station, and Stanley Street is 44%.
That's a sad statement. It's unfortunate that that's where we are, but I suppose fortunate that we can have the apparatus. And in terms of the Burns power tools, and I know I'm off track, but I have to tell you, I can't believe what a great job was done there. I listened to that from beginning to end on the scanner. I don't know how you didn't lose that, how you, that whole building, that whole didn't get, wasn't destroyed. That was incredible.
Thank you. Like always, we try to put out the fire in the original, where it originally starts, but in this case, with the amount of materials in there, the construction of the building, we weren't able to stop the fire to the building. Well, we were able to condense it, or keep it to that building itself, you know. So, again, we like to put it out before it gets out of control, but on arrival, we had flames coming out of the middle of the roof of the building. The building, I believe, is 140 feet long and 100 feet wide, connected on both sides to other properties. So, yes, the personnel on scene did a phenomenal job. I agree with you.
And the batteries. Thank you very much. With that, I yield.
And all the batteries there.
It was also because they had new fire trucks.
That's right, and that's why we need more.
That's a truism. I have to agree with Mr. Dionne on that.
Yeah, there's no doubt we need more, and believe me, like, that's why I started this off with, absolutely, always behind it, always supportive of it. Safety's a number one priority, has to be in the city. Thank you.
You yield now, Counsel?
Yes.
Motion referred to full counsel.
Second. The motion referred to full counsel made by Counsel Prow, seconded by Counsel Kilby, I believe. All in favor?
Aye.
Reposo, sorry, Counsel Reposo.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number three, a discussion for loan order for the CPA Central Fire Station and Florida Fire Museum in the amount of $1,025,539. It was referred on November 8th, 2022. Want to come down, please?
Good evening, Counsel. Counsel President John Brandt, 116 Rock Street, Fall River.
Oh, here comes Sandy. Sandy Dennis, 132 Highland Avenue, Fall River.
Counselor Seat Six, Counsel Prow, any questions?
To Mr. Brandt and Mrs. Dennis, I'm happy to see this come before us. We have been trying for so long to get that fire museum up and running, and in borrowing this money, what will CPA put into this yearly?
I think-
Can't put the whole thing in at once, obviously. You have historic, or are you putting it all in at once?
They've put in quite a few years, and probably, I think it's around 750?
Yeah, they put, CPCs funded them for, I'd say, at least three or four years.
Yeah.
So, to kind of put the project to an end, they put a big clump into their application this time, as did Central Fire Station.
Right.
And because they were two related projects, we were able, the committee was able to put them into one bond so they could actually get done. The fire museum could actually-
And Central.
And then Central Fire Station could really start to get a really kickstart, I believe, on John, the front facade of the building.
Yeah, this should get the fire museum open summertime, as long as the roof goes in, they have windows. I talked to Mike Lapage, who's head of the fire museum.
Working on that forever, Michael Haseman.
Yeah, yeah, it's a-
Great group of people down there.
It's, they're picking out, because everything's got to be to Secretary of State standards. So, they picked out a tile that goes on a roof, and that's what they're working on now. It's been kind of a slow process, but as soon as that goes up, the windows are done. They've already did, on their own, handicap accessibility to the bathrooms and stuff, so they should be open to the public hopefully this summer.
Oh, that'd be wonderful. And Central Fire Station?
The Central Fire Station, I wish they would have came in with both the Bedford side and the other side, because I think doing it one shot would have been great. But the front of it is going to be restored to looking like it was back in 1900 when it was built. It still has a lot of life to it. I think when it's done, it's going to be a showcase for that street and revitalizing the neighborhood. I mean, it's going to have a little pride in not just Fall River, the fire department, it's going to shine.
Well, thank you, and I applaud all the work that the CPA does. You have a great committee there, working on a lot of things, a great clerk to make sure things get moving, and nobody can move things like Sandy Dennis, so.
Thank you. Just, just to kind of shed a little bit of light on it, the Central Fire Station amount was 644,472, and the fire museum was 463,080, which would have given us well over $1 million if we were, if the committee were to fund them separately. It wouldn't have allowed the committee to really fund any other projects this year. So, by doing a five-year combined bond with them, they were able to not only fund the fire museum in full, Central Fire Station in full, they were able to do Father Kelly Park Lights, which was another $400,000 project. And then they also did the Westport Extension to the Quikashan Rail, the Copacabana River land acquisition, Barnabas Workshop Restoration.
That's correct.
And then the Dr. Fisk House, the Greater Flow of Art Museum, the Antioch School, the Historic Sanians Church, and the Massa Soya Fire. So, by bonding, they were able to fund all those projects this year. If they didn't bond, it really would have just been those two projects, or maybe one of them, and one of them wouldn't have been or partially funded. And I think John can attest, I guess, one of the goals of the committee is to try to fund these projects so they can get completed.
We were actually one of the first CPC committees in the state to use bonding as an extra additive way of funding, because the Quikashan Rail Trail, which was our first one five years ago, which has paid off now, we wouldn't, might not be seeing the Alford-Lima Quikashan Trail right now, because it would have had to raise the money through private sources and that. So, we came in, then they got federal funding, state funding. So, bonding is a big help to us and some of the big projects. The Bio Reserve in 2019, we did, what, a combined 44 acres of open space that we preserved for Fall River. So, the state looks at us-
No, I thought that bonding was a very wise thing to do, because you get that money every year from CPA.
Yeah.
So, to pay off on a bond, you really get more bang for your buck, and I thank you, Mr. Brandt, for all the work you do as chairman.
When we do bonding, we don't like to go over, this year, the state's given us another 30% match, so we'll end up with about $2.5 million to use for funding. So, as a committee or as a chairman, I don't like to go over the 2.5 when it comes to bonding, just in case something happens. We have the reserve there to pay off our bond, so the city wouldn't be held liable because we have the money coming in to pay for it. So, we take that into consideration when we're bonding. We don't want to overstretch ourselves.
Well, thank you, and if it wasn't for Mr. Lima putting the CPA together and pushing for it, all these other communities were getting money out of the registry of deeds, and we weren't.
Yeah.
So, I thought that was good, and it certainly has proven to have been beneficial to the city in all of the things that you just mentioned and other things to get done. But again, thank you and your committee very much. With that, I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Seat Eight, Counsel Washington.
Hi. I'm very excited about the fire museum. We're talking about the fire museum on South Main. So, what can the residents anticipate? Like, you're saying this summer it's going to be open for visits?
Right. They'll have, they have fire trucks in there, they have artifacts from every fire, they have artifacts from 9/11. Pretty much you'll be able to go in there and see the history of Fall River Fire Department. So, yeah, it'll be, it'll be nice for kids to go in and see it, because every kid loves a fire truck, so.
Yeah, they really do. The, is the animal control housed in there now?
Yes.
Yes. Are they going to be relocated?
I don't know.
Okay.
There's been talk about relocating them and having the museum take the whole thing over, which would be nice.
Yeah, that really would be nice.
Yeah.
And the hours of operation, you don't know yet with that?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay. That's exciting, though, so.
Yeah.
All right. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Seat Two.
Good evening. So, the $600,000 is going to do what?
That's going to replace some of the brick mortar. There'll be new fire doors. Obviously, the fire doors won't be the same as back then because you need speed and all this, but they've looked into matching as close as they can. The new window sills will be replaced. With the new window sills being done, we didn't want to go to the expense of doing new windows and then putting air conditioners in, so part of CPC, we can put, split minis in. So, now upstairs will have air conditioning, heat to preserve the building, so it qualifies under CPC money. And then the emblems on the outside, they'll be redone. The lighting will be replaced, well, replaced to what was there, so it'll look exactly like it did when it was first built.
Well, that'll be very nice.
Yeah.
I guess my next question would actually be more directed to Chief Olivera and the administration in terms of, has the roof been repaired on that building? Is this going to complete the envelope? I know they always say you do the envelope first, then you do the inside of the building, because that's how you, you stop further damage.
They came to us a few years ago to do the roof, so the roof has been done. So, that's finished.
Has the, was the problem with the mold inside the building mitigated?
That, I'm not sure. That I have to look into. I don't know. That's kind of out of our-
Can we have the chief come down, please?
Chief, welcome back. Can you just explain if the mold's been removed?
I'm sorry, sir?
Can you just explain to us whether or not that's been removed?
Yeah, I know the roof at the Center Fire Station has been replaced about three years ago. I think the mold issue was actually at the Stanley Street Fire Station and not the Center Fire Station. I don't remember there being a mold issue there, just speaking to Chief Olivera, he doesn't recall any mold issue down there at all, but there was one serious mold issue at the Stanley Street Fire Station that has been remedied.
That's been remedied?
Yes.
So with EMS taking over the Central Fire Station, they're no longer going to be at Commerce Way?
Um, there's, right now, that's where the headquarters are going to be, and again, from speaking with, that's going to be the central location for their response units, not their headquarters.
Their response units will be at Commerce Way?
No, 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 at the, at the Center Fire Station.
Oh, that'd be, yeah, Center Station.
The response units will be, the majority of their response units will be headquartered at the Center Fire Station. For right now, their, their headquarters will still be co-located with the Fall River Department at one forty Commerce Drive.
Okay, so I assume with this change, they're no longer going to need the expansion that was talked about previously, that, that they were going, the enterprise fund would fund an expansion at Commerce Way for EMS?
I think the administration was going to speak on that tonight. Possibly.
You're welcome to come down and explain what's-
Mr. President, isn't there a point of order that we're talking about the CPA?
Well, because, because CPA is funding this building, I'm curious as to how much work is left, and if there isn't going to be an expansion at Commerce Way, and they're going to use the enterprise fund to complete any necessary repairs on Central Fire Station, so that we have a fully functioning, fully repaired Central Fire Station, so it is connected.
We'll, we'll answer it real briefly, but I think it's starting to drift a little bit from the issue, so you can explain it real briefly, and then we'll go back to what's-
Sorry, Seth.
Oh, not at all. It's good to be here. Very briefly, the EMS does intend to make additional investments in the Center Fire Station in order to upgrade bathrooms, make sure that it can accommodate both female and male personnel more than it does now. They're going to deal with interior spaces to make sure that they have all the, the spaces they need. Important to keep in mind that the Center Fire Station is not going to be without firefighters. There is going to be fire apparatus that remains there as well as firefighters, so it's going to be a joint station, it's just going to have a larger concentration of rescues there, but there's going to be significant investment by EMS in that building, but that's not, so I, I believe that they were approved to bond for a certain amount of money up on Commerce Way. The investment in center is not going to be that entire amount, and there's ongoing conversation as to, you know, where to go from here. This is going to be sort of an operational center in terms of their administrative headquarters, that's still going to be co-located for the time being, and we're looking at different options moving forward.
Thank you, Seth.
Okay, thank you. I think that was important, because now you have a whole picture instead of a half a picture. Thank you, and I will support the funding. With that, I yield.
Thank you. There being no further questions, thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it. I entertain a motion to refer to the motion from Council.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Poso, seconded by Counselor-
I second.
Carrera. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Regular City Council meeting will begin. What's that? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn finance.
Motion to adjourn finance.
Motion to adjourn finance made by Counselor Kirby, seconded by Counselor Poso. All in favor?
Aye.
Regular City Council meeting will begin at seven o'clock. Regular City Council meeting will come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselors Kadeem, Dionne.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
La Liberty.
Here.
Pelletier.
Here.
Carrera.
Here.
Reposo.
Here.
Washington.
Here.
President Kamara.
Here. The county chair, please rise. Split the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a moment to sign a prayer, please. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made where they're perceived or unperceived by those present and not deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, the first item before you is a communication from the mayor requesting the confirmation of the appointment of Kristen Cantara Olivera-
Motion to confirm.
-of the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
Motion to confirm has been made by Counselor, seat two. Counselor Dionne, seconded by Counselor, seat seven. Counselor Poso. On the motion, roll call.
On the confirmation of Mrs. Olivera, Counselor Kadeem, Dionne.
Yes.
Kilby.
Yes.
La Liberty.
Yes.
Pelletier.
Yes.
Carrera.
Yes.
Reposo.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
President Kamara.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Clerk.
Next item before you is a request from the mayor for the confirmation of Al Olivera as the Director of City Operations.
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Motion to confirm has been made by Counselor, seat three. Counselor Kirby, seconded by Counselor, seat six. Counselor Carrera. On the motion, Counselor, seat two. Counselor Dionne.
Yeah, I'm not going to be supporting this, and the reason why has nothing to do with the person, it has to do with the salary. I don't think the taxpayers of the city can afford another large increase, and, you know, it's, we've had more personnel, we've had a lot of raises, we've plugged our budget with Opera funding, we don't know, I don't know how we're necessarily going to be able to afford it all in the future. So based on that reason alone, nothing to do with the individual, just based on the salary, it was a one-twenty to one-forty, they started at the, the top number, and with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion, Counselor, seat five, do you want to, do you want to speak on this?
Yeah.
Counselor, seat five.
You know, we've been looking for somebody, and we got somebody, and we had somebody before that was going to come, that didn't make it, and we need somebody good. And I said it before, you got somebody that qualifies, got a track record, like the water department, here's another individual, I think, he's going to be here, you're paying him good money, I believe he can do a good job, he was here before, and, you know, we can turn around and all say, no, hey, too much money, what do we do then? Yeah, I mean, we got to move. Can we get somebody cheaper? Probably so, who knows? But the, the thing was, they come up with a figure, he's, he's all right with the figure, the mayor's all right with the figure, and I think the figure that he gets, I think we can work along with him, and I think we will be well satisfied. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat six. Counselor Carrera.
Yeah, I would have to agree with Counselor Pelletier. When you look at the individual, it is on the individual, in my opinion, because this individual happens to know the city of Fall River very well, worked here before, knows his way around the city, and he has a lot of experience. And if you hire someone that has a lot of experience, in the long run, they save you money with the experience that they have and how they can get people to work together and cross-train people, and there's a lot of different factors that go into it. So that is the reason why I'm supporting it, because I'm a firm believer that with the experience that an individual has, they should be compensated for their experience. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat eight. Counselor Washington.
I'm just going to go with that. You get what you pay for, you know, someone that operates clinics, you want the best physicians, you want the best therapists, you pay for them, and you pay for all of their experience, and Counselor in seat six, absolutely correct, someone with that caliber, someone with that saves a ton of money with that expertise, so we are blessed to have him. I will be supporting this. With that, Council President, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat seven. Counselor Poso.
Two questions through you, Mr. President. What is the length of the contract for Mr. Olivera?
I think it's three, three years, Counselor.
Three years.
Three years, okay. The only thing I would request, I mean, I think there are some pressing issues that need to be solved when, when it comes to city operations, and I think it'd be important to, if Mr. Olivera is confirmed, kind of check back in six months to a year, and just to see what progression we've made. I think we've talked a lot about some issues over time, and I'd just like, if Mr. Olivera is confirmed in the administration, to come back and say, you know, these are the things we're tackling, this is where we are with that, and keep us in the loop, because I think this position can do some good things for the city. We want to make sure that that is followed through with. I yield.
Thank you, question. Counselor, very good points by all of you. Thank you, Counselors. So motion has been made and seconded, we have discussion, roll call.
On the motion to confirm Mr. Olivera as the Director of Operations, Counselor Kadeem, Dionne.
Nope.
Kilby.
Yes.
La Liberty.
Yes.
Pelletier.
Yes.
Carrera.
Yes.
Reposo.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
President Kamara.
Yes. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Mr. Olivera is President. Welcome and congratulations.
Welcome back, my friend.
Madam Clerk?
The next item is a communication from the mayor and a resolution authorizing submission of a Section 108 loan guarantee application, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, for aging fire apparatus and equipment.
Motion approved.
Second.
The proper motion would be to-
Motion to accept and place on file.
Place on file, communication and adopt a resolution.
Okay.
Motion has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Dionne. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is a communication from the mayor and a loan order for Phase Twenty-Two for lead service removal in the city's water systems in the amount of four million six hundred seventy-five thousand dollars.
Motion to be approved.
Second.
Motion to be authorized, be published and referred to committee on finance.
Yep.
Motion has been made and seconded by Counselor Kirby, seconded by Counselor, motion made by Counselor Kirby, seconded by Counselor Perry. On the motion, Counselor, seat two. Counselor Dionne.
Yes, can we have Mr. Ferlin come down to just kind of explain a little bit about this loan application, et cetera?
We're in the middle of a city council meeting, we'd have to waive the rules.
Motion to waive the rules.
Second.
Motion to waive the rules has been made by Counselor Dionne, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Come on down, Mr. Ferlin, please. Give us a brief scenario of what you're going to be doing.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Four million and six hundred seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yes, thank you very much, Counselor. So this loan authorization is the lead service replacement throughout the whole entire, it's not going to include the whole entire city, but it will be at certain locations throughout the city. We have roughly about thirty-five hundred or so either full or partial lead services throughout the city. This loan authorization will be supported by SRF funding. That's the mechanism for the bipartisan infrastructure law funding to be able to funnel down through us. So essentially, what we need to do is take a loan order, take a loan from the SRF program, and then they will provide us principal forgiveness on that loan. Over the next four years, we'll be embarking on a large lead service replacement program, which will include over seventeen million dollars of funding, this loan order being a portion of it, as well as some other grants that will, will be announced, and I plan on asking the council as well to use three million dollars of the Opera funding that you provided through the Bristol County Treasury for lead service removal as well.
So essentially, this loan order won't be the responsibility of the taxpayers, and it won't have to come out of your funding either?
A portion of it will, so the discussion so far that I've had with the, with the Treasury through the Mass Clean Water Trust is they're talking bipartisan infrastructure law, loan forgiveness of anywhere from thirty to fifty percent or more of the loan that we take. So the overall plan for the next four years would be seventeen million dollars of spending, and the only burden onto the ratepayers would be roughly about a three million dollar loan, as long as that bipartisan infrastructure law spending comes through as, as they've been discussing it.
And that three million is what's represented on this, on this last page, the start of the long-term debt, the effect on the water rate, et cetera, that's what this breakdown is, is based on that three million?
Yes.
So on a three million dollar bond, it's an eight cent increase on the water rate in year one?
Yeah, so in, so if that was approved this year, two thousand and twenty-five would be the first year essentially that we would see that on the, on the debt service. When I built this, I went with the lower of the principal reduction, which was only thirty percent. I wanted to be conservative to make sure, so if it goes up to fifty percent loan reduction, then that would be less of an effect on the water rate.
So eight cents per CCF would represent approximately how much per quarter on a water bill?
So that's about a dollar ten per quarter on a water bill.
Okay.
Counselor, if I may, this is going to be authorized, be published, and referred to committee on finance. We're going to have all this in finance at the next scheduled meeting, just to let you be aware of that. All we're going to do now is authorize, be published, and refer it to finance.
Okay, that's fine. I, was a point being made, but that's okay.
The point can continue to be made, I'm just saying, in the interest of what we're doing here, we're just going to refer this item to the finance committee.
I understood that, thank you. And that was my last question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other further questions? Do you want to refer to, Mr. Ferlin, while you're down here, are the counselors still want to ask questions? Counselor, seat seven. Counselor Poso?
Real quick, Mr. Ferlin, does this have any, anything to do with the letter that we all received recently? Does any way connect it to that?
I, so, yeah.
The failure to remove lead service?
Yep. Well, the letter that the, all residents received about the failure to remove lead services was in relation to calculation that DEP did based on a five-year removal, so fi, they say that we had five years to remove all of the rest of the lead services within our city. I disagreed on that calculation in abundance of caution. We agreed to send the letter out to all of, all of the customers throughout the city.
And does this help to start remedying that issue?
Without a doubt.
Thank you, sir. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat four. Counselor Liberty.
Just a quick question, is this going into the homes or just to the sidewalk?
Nope, so this will be, this city is going to commit to do full lead service replacement, so do all the way from the main, all the way into the meadow, and then also, so there's seven hundred and fifty-six lead services that are full from the meadow to the main. We're also going to be going back to all the ones where we've removed from the main to the curb stop and removing from the curb stop into the house.
So when we had talked, I think it was back in the spring, there was going to be possibility for homeowners to have funds to do that, but this- possibility for homeowners to have funds to do that, but this is going to replace that.
This, this, right, exactly. So we're not going to do a loan or program or anything like that between this and the other grants that we've, that we're being secured, we're going to use that funding to fund all of it.
There'll be no cost to the homeowners?
Correct.
Excellent. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. Phelan.
Mr. President?
Counselor C5, Counsel Reprozo?
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Phelan a few minutes ago. He had another issue he wanted to talk about, and I just want to ask him, what was the issue that you wanted to talk about?
So again, I just want to make sure that this keeps moving. It's a very, it's time sensitive so that we can get the work started, the loan authorization as well. And then the next item on the agenda as well is time sensitive.
Yeah, what's that, A or B?
So both of them.
Fine.
Connected. Thank you.
If the attention is to hear it at the next council meeting.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to authorize it to be published and refer it to the Committee on Finance.
There was a motion already made.
It would have been made, that's why we had discussion. That motion was made and seconded already. I'll entertain, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Cook?
The next item before you is a communication from the mayor and an order for the acceptance of the Adirondack Farm located on Blossom Road, Lot W-15-0021, and a land grant resolution for this parcel.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt is made by Counselor C3, Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor CD, Counselor Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The discussion on the motion, Counselor C5, Counsel Reprozo?
Well, you know, if Mr. Phelan had something to say about this one or the other one, I would ask that he come down and speak on it.
If you want to waive the rules, you can do it, but...
Okay, motion to waive the rules.
Second.
He said he wanted us to adopt them as soon as possible because they're time sensitive.
Yeah, he said it was time sensitive.
What he said, Counselor, was he would like us to adopt the next two because they're time sensitive to him, so that's what he said. But he can come down and tell you the same thing. Is there a motion, has been made to waive the rules, or second?
Second.
Second, on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Phelan, come back down, please. Motion carries.
Keep it short.
Counselors, thank you very much for the time. Again, yeah, so this is in relation to Adirondack Farm, the purchase, which the council has supported with Bristol County Treasury funds. We're also getting grants from other funds as well, and it is time sensitive in relation to the land grant, if there's any specific questions. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are you satisfied, Counsel, with that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any opposed? Motion still carries. Madam Cook?
We have a number of traffic, recommendations from the Traffic Commission.
Second.
Motion for the Orders Committee has been made by Counselor C8, Counsel Washington, seconded by Counselor C3, Counsel Kilby.
Okay.
Or is it Counselor C7, Counsel Reprozo?
It was, I made a motion, he seconded.
I'm sorry, my head's down when you're making those motions, I apologize. Motion has been made by Counselor C6, I stand corrected, Pereira, seconded by Counselor Reprozo on seat seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is a communication from the Planning Board recommending the acceptance of Courtney Street extending from Highland Avenue to Fieldstone Lane, along with the order for the plans.
Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Motion would be to accept and place on file and recommend the adopted order for plans. Motion has been made by Counselor Pereira?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next item is a committee report, the Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on November 8, 2022, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying resolution be granted leave to withdraw, with Counselor Pamela S. La Liberty absent and now voting. This is the resolution regarding the administrative community utilities investigate harvesting energy from specially designed in-pipe turbines.
The top committee's recommendation to grant the leave to withdraw.
Second.
Okay, so, motion has been made to adopt by Counselor C2, seconded by Counselor C5. All in favor, on the motion?
Aye.
On the motion, Counsel Pereira?
The only thing I have to say is, I don't think that people really investigated this the way that I think maybe it should have been investigated. Because if you go behind Wow Jim, where the old Quichashan River piped out in big pipes to run out, you can't tell me there's not enough water pressure coming through there to stick a turbine and get some, get some energy back. I mean, I don't know what degrees anybody has that was checking this to see about the designs. I mean, the committee, you know, vetted it out and they're giving it leave to withdraw, and I'll vote on it because, you know, the committee did their due diligence. But I got to tell you, I mean, let's get a little proactive, try to do things a little differently, and you go behind Wow Jim, you can hear that water rushing. And if we're not harnessing that power, it just kind of disappoints me. But nevertheless, I yield, Mr. President.
We can always revisit it, Counselor. We can always send it back and have someone else go look at it in the future. So maybe right, maybe some person, maybe other people can see it in a different way. But we did our role.
Yep.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is a proposed ordinance for second reading and enrollment, amending the salary schedule for the Director of the Fall River Emergency Management Agency.
Motion to make pass through second reading and enrollment?
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment has been made by Counselor Reprozo, seconded by Counselor Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is a proposed ordinance for the amendments to the graffiti ordinance, also for second reading and enrollment.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment?
Second.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment has been made by Counselor C7, Counsel Reprozo, seconded by Counselor C2, Counselor Dion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Seat six opposed. Not on the whole thing, but I'm opposed to how it's going to be paid. And in this ordinance, there's nothing where somebody can come and appeal it. There's no appeal process in this, and I think in every ordinance, there's usually an appeal process. So that is the reason that I oppose. But I do think we have to clean up graffiti around the city. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C2 noted, do we noted as opposed? Motion still carries.
Mr. President, was that Counselor C6?
Counselor C6, Counsel Reprozo. Did I say C2?
Yes.
Yeah, me.
Thank you.
Me, not you.
I apologize.
She made the motion.
Yeah.
We fix it, we got it straight.
Okay.
Good job, Counselors.
The next item is a proposed ordinance, proposed ordinance for miscellaneous traffic for second reading and enrollment as amended.
Motion to adopt second reading and enrollment?
Motion to adopt second reading and enrollment has been made by Counselor C6, Counsel Pereira?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor C7, Counsel Reprozo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is an order from Verizon New England Incorporated for the installation of approximately 680 feet of underground conduit on the Wall Street, with the condition that roadway restoration shall be from the israeli curb line to two feet beyond the trench.
So what's the appropriate motion to table, because we don't know the whole story?
No, the appropriate motion would be to adopt it because it's already been done.
Even though it's passed.
And the engineer knows about it.
The engineer knew.
But you can vote any way you want.
Oh, I don't care, I just...
I'm just saying the appropriate motion would be to adopt it.
Seems like a moot point, a moot point, yeah.
It is, it's after the fact, correct, Counselor. We all, he made it very abundantly clear that that happened, and we should find out why it happened and hope that it doesn't happen again, but it's not the first time it's happened. Other people have done it. Sometimes it's an emergency situation, sometimes it happens and they just get the work done, and then they come to the council and beg for forgiveness. But anyone can vote their conscience. Counselor C6, Counsel Pereira?
I would make a motion to adopt, but I really would like to know who the contractor was and how the contract, how that slipped through. If we could find out from whoever the city engineer sent it to all Counselors.
We can, we can send the legislature just to explain to us how it was that it happened and how we can prevent it from happening going forward.
But I make a motion to adopt.
Second.
To approve.
One of the ways we can do it, Counselor, is to put in an ordinance or a resolution that if it happens again, there's going to be a very hefty fine. And once they get that very hefty fine, they'll stop doing it.
Right.
So I don't know what the penalty is right now, but there's got to be some compensation for it, because it's just, it's not right. You know, unless it's an extreme delicate situation of emergency, which I don't think this was. So we can look into it, see what happened, see where it fell through the cracks.
If we could look into it and just send an email to the Counselors to let us know what happened here and how we can rectify it, so it doesn't happen again.
Okay.
So motion to adopt, and with that, I yield.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor C6, Counsel Pereira, seconded by Counselor C2, Counselor Dion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have the police chief's report on licenses.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the chief's report on licenses has been made by Counselor C2, Counselor Dion, seconded by who?
I seconded.
Counselor C6, Counsel Reprozo, thank you. Madam Cook? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, all opposed? Motion carries.
We have a number of claims.
Motion to refer to corporation counsel.
Motion to refer to claims to corporation counsel has been made by Counselor C7, Counsel Reprozo, seconded by Counselor C2, Counselor Dion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have minutes from the Planning Board for October 17, 2022.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept and place on file?
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Counselor C2, Counselor Dion,
seconded by Counselor C7, Counsel Reprozo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have a structure on our over a public way application for the annual children's holiday parade for two banners on Bedford Street at Central Fire Station and South Main Street at Center Place.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor C3, Counsel Kilby, who seconded the motion?
I did.
Counselor C, seconded by Counselor C6, Counsel Pereira. Madam Cook, could you just tell us what date that's going to be on so we can give people notice?
December 3.
It'll be Saturday, December 3 at 1:00 p.m.
Saturday, December 3 at 1:00 p.m.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Can we make a motion to take items 17 to 22?
Second.
Second.
Motion to take items 17 to 22 has been made by Counsel Reprozo, seconded by Counselor C2, Counselor Dion. All in favor?
Aye.
Before we vote on the motion, Counsel, Madam Cook, can you read item 17 to 22, please?
These are city council minutes, public hearing, October 25, 2022, Committee on Finance and regular meeting, all for the same date. Then we have for November 8, public hearings, Committee on Finance and regular meeting minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is a communication from the Department of Public Utilities regarding municipal aggregation programs.
Motion would be to place, accept and place on file?
Motion so made.
Motion has been made by Counselor C6, Counsel Pereira, seconded by Counselor C7, Counsel Reprozo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Also have a communication from Good Energy regarding municipal aggregation programs compliance.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Counselor C7, Counsel Reprozo?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor C6, Counsel Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on November 22, 2022, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying application be referred to the full council for action, with Counselors Shawnee Kadeem and Pamela S. La Liberty absent and now voting. This is the application for the Section 108. For, hot application.
Second.
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor C3, Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counselor C7, Counsel Reprozo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on November 22, 2022, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying loan order be referred to the full council for action, with Counselors Shawnee Kadeem absent and now voting. This is for the loan order for the CPA Central Fire Station and the Fall River Fire Museum in the amount of $1,025,539.
Motion to approve?